Welcome to the town of New York. It's time to meet. And so, can I? Let me hear the question.
Play the lead is a little wide. I'm gonna do it as well. We need to be able to say one nation under our individual.
The record we've got, we have all council members and attendants. We will be like, there are other things. I guess, I mean, might be there to go up to. podium to finish your voting and address the record. We'll begin with that. Do five for the.
Well, Mary, I'm Gina O'Malley. Who's my address?
Go ahead.
And I'm here to help represent the parking lot department. And we had noticed that there was a suggestion to break the link down. But if you can manage to get it certain, because we could find. We can wait for the song finale. Uh, I think because of the nine two million, the community spent almost thirty thousand dollars to have a dock rebuilt lower. About two and a half years earlier. And, uh, the previous dock was not completely made in accordance, mainly because the speed that the. Uh, the dock, uh, is currently sold into the high water mine, which I understand is kind of a standard. And if you're making it thirty inches, make it, uh, maybe. Will make it a lot more harder. A lot harder for people to view, uh, for you to get in there. So, um. We do not want to see every loss what they consider as good idea to get this guy. Um, no good help with maybe hurricane damage, but, uh, we really have concerns that it will, uh, fall out of meetings and specifically we'd be made a compliance. It might be even very difficult.
If I, thank you so very much. Thank you for bringing that as well. Often times, um, especially the more times you do, uh, mediation and everything like that. Mitigation, uh, um, sometimes that history can get lost there. So we'll, we'll chat it out and figure out like this. Uh, next up, Mr. Bob Aden.
Bob, we can't let it not clear to sit, can you? Well, you sort of been there. Uh, I'm here to speak on the same thing. Uh, four years ago, Parks and Rec. Raised the funds and effectively lowered what was efficient. It was very hot. And it was diving off the end and it didn't show. There was no functionality for it, except for the kids diving off in shallow water. It was lower, made eighty eight compliant, and it brought to a level that would allow. Kind of borders and kayak which should utilize. Same height as we have it now. The war was just under thirty thousand dollars. Now we're looking at thirty thousand dollar for it to back up. And do some repairs, granted, but, um. Unless we're gonna raise all the dollars. Make them that height. I think it's a waste of money. For thirty thousand dollars, you go a lot of repair to that dock. You're reversing some of the functionality. And. I just think it needs to stay the way it is. If you want to repair it, repair it properly. Okay. If there are recommended changes. Do a part. Then, in my opinion, that matter should be presented by the red department or committee before this. Give them a talk on it and say, okay, here's the increment and staff advising with the information they have. They make a recommendation, comes back up to you folks. In this one, you've effectively bypassed when you commit. Not where you want it, the new way. That's my concern.
Yeah, sorry. Is, I wouldn't know it. Well, it is, should we bring something out of the house since it ended up to talk about it? We kind of. It, it probably has to be covered during the evening, so on the tennis. Okay. We need further input from, uh, we'll do that. In this case, some of it may answer all the questions. Um, I'm S A and yeah, with right area. So. It may, it may just solve everybody's problem issue. I don't know. Can you want to speak on that time? You know, we too.
That, that's at the mayor's present?
And then just comment and we, we're doing, we're moving forward in the agenda or whatever. Yeah, moving, but I think that. They, the public comment, that way we get all of that and then we'll move on. Cause they think it, it may turn out to be a little longer discussion than this. To my sense of. Uh, Mr. Frank Walters, uh, five three five.
Hello, I'm Frank Walters at five three five with the drive. Um, I raised my daughter and my son, you know, the nearest siblings who, uh. Wouldn't really, um, I now have six grandchildren, um. And you also see here, um, when you're out on the south side of the town and we enjoy. Like everyone, peacefulness, the safety, out of the working, jumping off the dock. Um, so the reason I bring this up. My wife and I have a contract on the house at the end of Port Avenue. Which is on the coast side of Lakeview Park. And it's two docks down from Lake Street Park. And I'm very concerned about buying property if the going's on at Lake Street Park. And I've been asking around so many times. Yes, um. I'm hearing encouraging things that things are gonna change at that park. And get it back to being something that's peaceful and safe. Um. Again. The, 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 the encouraging thing is not, isn't, I'm not always telling me for sure. But I'm hearing encouraging things that things are gonna change there. I just want you guys to know that I and anybody else who's submitted your job, Lake Street Park. Will help you however we can. To get, to get things back to being peaceful and safe.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. AC Adams, saving for it this year. Okay. Nick and Susan, see here. Higher. Um, I guess sixty five minus three. Oh, yeah. If you'd like, you can defer until we actually hear the variance that we're seeing. Mr. David Sharp, ten twenty seven of this.
Uh, may I defer with a maybe?
All right. Uh, Ms. Randy D. Be three five.
Hi, Randy, he's eight three five of the last street. I have a couple of different topics. Um. I, I did, I do have a neighbor that's here for variance, um, and I just want to say that I can support with what the R B said, which is we have a lot of porch. Um, but to be very much before and more, you know, for the whole property to today's standards, because I think I have money, you know, a lot of, on the street. We're already getting soil. I don't need to see, you know, my yard. Um, second thing is, um, in regards to, uh. I know we're voting on minutes tonight only, I believe, for the barricade. So I just want to check to see, I want to ask me, what's the schedule? Like, uh, is there any public workshop, whether it is or isn't, which one will it be on and then which meeting will be on potentially for a vote from councils to move forward with that? I think that's it. I don't know. I'm gonna go with that.
Robert, are you aware of the timeframe for? Next step with the mayor.
It's just a scheduling issue. Um, we have a billion five hundred block, um. A lot of hot topics right now. So we're just trying to figure out when we're able to do it and fit with everybody's schedules. Uh, in addition to that, we have budget hearings coming up, our budget workshops. Um, so it's just a matter of Tony and I working with Mike Woodward and figuring out when it would be a good time to start. Getting everybody together to do a town council workshop on the subject matter.
We're gonna do another workshop on that.
Yeah. The first one, I believe, is a public input workshop. This will be an actual town council workshop, then we say it's a town council for adoption.
See.
So, we, we do have neighbors that want to know, like, they want to talk to their partners and some of them, and they want to know, like, if so, it's maybe on a main workshop. They'd like the opportunity to all of us as a group to take a walk and then gardening, saying some of it, it's something that's private to come to our shop here.
Obviously, the question is, go ahead and gather your thoughts and your, your, you want to see the proper and make that appointment.
Okay.
And that way, I think it's a little flexibility. We're gonna try, I need to, to push this to get it done before budget, but you know how it takes a lot of time. Cause it's like six weeks we have to do in six weeks.
When the budget starts, June, and importance is late.
Do I, right?
That's not the last, oh, I'm not always kind of one of those things. For that.
And this, and this, we have this agreement.
Yes. Well, I know in May, when we have the budget analysis report, and I was trying to see if the building was gonna be discussed at that one. Uh, but it doesn't seem like it's going to. Um, so I could probably put that on to that agenda.
Yeah.
And give them progress.
Yeah, we can get a slot. We did that early slot for that shot. Any additional public comments? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Next up is, uh, this is, I didn't, for new visits, these are three sets of either councils or overshotments. Um, we have on the agenda, maybe April six twenty twenty three hotel and East Nine Avenue permanent traffic, working public workshop. The April eleven twenty twenty three town council meeting, and then April seventeen twenty twenty three, where we have US Orange. Early, which, uh, I can also be, you can bring these out individually or include these minutes as one item. Very, the motion is, we're welcome. Yeah, motion to approve all, uh, councilor's data. Second, councilor's data, council, any comments, questions, or concerns on the plan? See, not really any, really the council position. All right. Thank you, council. And those, many meetings, our, there it is. Next, uh, is. Uh, item, uh, one, this is, uh, various requests, CD Z nine three dash zero six four four one four down point nine. Coming to make a butler, uh, variants to allow the reconstruction of a previously unpermitted book dock at ten feet from the side of property line. Council, DRB, right, and it's pool six with zero, and we hear from the act, we can see, but we'll probably certainly grab.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, the short, again, that basically is what came to the town planner. Um, as I said, this is the variance in four four one four down point nine. Um, this stock was actually built many years ago. Uh, we did quite a bit of research and we did coordinate it to be honest this year. Um, it appears to have been built sometime in nineteen eighty four. So the stock has been out there a very long time. The issue that came up and why this is having to come to the various process is we also did see going through the areas that sometime. Between that period in two thousand and five, there was an alteration to that dock that was not permitted. Uh, as you all know, we follow Orange County's dock ordinance related to these kinds of issues. And in this case, under one permitted. Um, change to that dock after it's nineteen eighty eight, it can be considered brand possible that you go so back where they were before. That's why it's sure to come for the barriers. So what they are requesting is to reconstruct the dock. To put it, um, in its existing location, they're not changing the footprint or location of the dock. It's, it's stayed at ten feet over the years, it'll remain at ten feet. Um, the reason for this, we're missing our going down from the storm last summer, that is before this year, but. Um, we just sent out the notices. Um, every response we received was in support. It's eleven support and no objections. We're one of the days, uh, the days owners. And then the mayor said the R B didn't do this, and they do recommend group of five of six zero to just sort your information. They have the sequel permit from Orange County, right, now protection. So they have been answering the question to me, and as far as the public, I'm the slipper, let's hear the sequel.
Brad, is this work to do this thing, document, and remains? Yes, sir. Nothing, thank you. Okay, so. I constantly have additional questions for Brown's, your answer.
Um, yes, they, but I had already told you if they wanted to make a change. What happens then?
Then they'll have to come back for variance or any addition or any change. So this only hasn't been, that exactly wasn't.
Further questions, uh, Brad. Briefly hear from the other.
Hi, she looks sick, resting, my hurting, uh, those were two four facing guys, just over three two seven two six. Uh, we're actually not even replacing the whole dock. We're just taking away all the frame and denting the roof and the lattice to stay. So. It's not moving. The patterns were set properly, so they stay and just stand without rest. So really just want to change the whole. Deck surface, but everything's going to stay exactly the same.
Thank you very much. Um, any, how are you, are the committee, right? No. Question, uh, we're just, um, motion to a group by, uh, hostess. That was taken, it was mom. All of us. Um, any additional questions, concerns, council? See now.
Hi.
All right. Thank you guys for here. Uh, next up is, uh, another repair ancient process, the Z twenty three dash zero seven, this is for eight zero four of the upstream. Uh, lazy items, this is the various to allow thirty one point six percent gross for area. Uh, new front porch to the front setback of twenty sixteen and one hundred percent angry, uh, gross floor area is to see. I'm who I need to add to the sensory device, uh, with a higher layer than eighteen feet. Uh, D R B recommends approval of only the front porch condition, with condition for the entire property brought into compliance with the current. On site, so my retention, um. And you hear from Brad.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I can actually believe this from George. Um, as you saw with this request, and there it was. Quite a bit more in terms of doing addition to the garage. Um, so we've discussed with the D R B. And you also see, we got a lot of public feedback and the residents concerned about the request. Um, the D R B did make a recommendation only to allow for that front porch ability that will match it just in front of the house, so beyond that. But then also to bring the entire property up to current stormwater requirements. Um, the applicant after the D R B knew submitted a revised plan that does do exactly that. They revise the request to only do the front porch as. Recommended by the D R B, and they do acknowledge that you're gonna do come through permitting, that they'll also do the full stormwater. Um, for this property, for this private. So, um, as soon as there, the D R B did recommend an approval with that change, with only the front porch. And coming in full compliance with current stormwater requirements by a vote of six to zero. And I do believe that doesn't address any concerns of the residents and headgear, uh, a brand of one of those and be yourself supportive of it.
And you know, I said, I do like the, uh, record for the on site range. That helps, that's just it. People compliance or the E G. Um, so that's, it's always possible.
Yeah, you should have anything from your condition, but that was actually brought up to by an applicant. Who offered it up, uh, before we even got into the session of what that out, that was part of her plan. That was, uh, video.
Really, I'm very excited this one. Yes, we, uh, I'm sorry. Council, any further questions?
So what's in this, uh, agenda? Your vision on requests.
There is no, but also after that, there is the, the bottom.
Additional questions, reference? See, not, we'll hear from you. And if you give us your name and, and full address, we appreciate it.
Yes, hi, I'm Lucy Adams. Um, just wanted to reiterate what Brad here said, that taking into account the recommendation from D R B. We agree that the best step forward is to remove the garage request and only not the front porch. And we are in full support of. Whatever recommendation comes to fruition for the government to make it into compliance.
Thank you very much. Sure. Any questions for the act? Thanks, see. None, like very much. My person, my second councilman, that. Uh, any further questions, comments, the, that, we'll begin going to the council person, sir. Hi.
Hi.
All right. So the variants for, uh, April four, okay, of street passage, yes. Um, next up is item Z twenty three dash zero eight, this is by Pine Street. This is Nick and Susan, the home, uh, flat, Kevin Ball, this is the variance to allow a sport work. In front of the principal structure, uh, the D R B recognizes tile five one.
Right, yes, sir. Um, and this is the best fifty five minus three. Um, this property. On sixty five lines, you only aware, it is somewhat unusual. It is set back off of pine. It's part of the, some, we can come to our council at the time. Several years ago, that is actually slipped back out. To those original padded lots, which created a soup water form lots in the back and then the lots on the front of the rungs. Yes, that is true. Yes, we put this lot with their, and they're acting access from a easement off of pine due back to that lot. So it does make this slide one of the difficult in terms of how we look at where the front of the lives and things like that, because it doesn't actually front on a public road. But it is access to illegal easement. But in terms of the house, so the house is wearing out a lot, really only ways can, as it's a long, right, so we have a lot. Um, how they have proposed for a sport work. Is in the front of the house, and that's what your code says. It's not related to the word, the front property line is, but it's in front of the house. So they have it in front of, they're proposing it in front of their house. Um, it is a sport work and. As, as you only aware, that lot has quite a bit of elevation change. It makes it play back towards the lake. So they are putting it somewhat into the side of the hill. Um, so there is that, that is supposed to work for, um, the variance simply is to allow in front of the house. Your code requires it to be behind the house or to the side of the house. On this lot, it's not why you know, really, to have this house, have it on the side, they could put it to the back, if they were to move the house or go. Towards, um, for that. For that way. Um, so that was the, the request for, um, they are not proposing any lights on the quarter. And as I said, our previous experience with this work for, um, this for, like anything near the town, I mean, or subject to your norms or, it's more restrictions. On that, so if you're concerned, it would be covered under your norms or it's more, and again, that they're not hoping any lights. But if they did want to do lights, your code also requires some lights to be fully shielded, so they would not have a public item package on the properties. Um, in terms of this, this request, when we sent out the notice, we did get quite a bit of response. We did receive explicit support. And we did receive five in opposition, now the one in opposition worked on the case to property only. So those are the ones, or the, the most of those, or those objectives same time. When this went through the review of the development report, they had quite a bit of discussion, and they were concerned about the impact on those case favorites. Um, with that location, and they didn't find a hardship with it. They felt it could be a change made, um, the location of the house or for this to happen. So they did make a recommendation to the town council to deny this variance, and the vote was five to one to deny the variance. And that's what the action of the development report was. Um, the owners are here to see. Um, on this request, I'm be happy to try to answer any question.
Thank you. Here a little bit about. Fence and this screen here. Um. Bit of a hybrid, right? So it looks like it's. Okay, it's here, it's week five to seven. Um, so that, well, I, I'm, you know, it's like, you gotta dig up the microphone. Brad, you gotta be.
Yeah. Yeah, with the flexing around, so it's, of course, it's not something for the single identification when we were both, because it allows iron fencing.
Okay.
So we're, it was a, it's a, the contractors here, and that, the others would not, and the R B's, there were a lot of questions that I keep not experienced in time. So I was actually really happy with the, uh, direction here. Um, so that may clear up some of the questions that they had, and you all probably remember this one for a long, so the time of future. It's in, we'll, we'll, thanks for all.
Brad, something, do you have a question?
And we get all of our questions, council, and then we represent in circle back, but, uh.
I had a hard time thinking of this as the front yard. Is, how did you come to that determination?
And that, that was a hard part of this, yes. But if the code doesn't reference the sport work, the front yard, it says in front of this, the, this property. In front of the house. So for the, on the sport floor, could he? I mean, well, we will do that, I would not recommend too, it's the front yard, but. We actually learned about what it is in front of that house.
Again, and.
It's, it's. You think. There are good reflection on, and that's actually what I've been into the D R B, and I just want to leave you why us have to go through that variance. It's very hard to apply that code language. Clearly, you say this is actually the way it should be. Which is part of the reason why this is coming to a variance. But yeah, we, we actually have, like, part of your packet. There wasn't such any, like, the applicant heard on this. Was it the front or the front door is, which is what I supply now, or is the front that's facing toward pine tree?
Which is, it also means they're in a corner.
Or it is.
That is, it's on the east street.
Well, I ended up spending.
That is, about, uh, the, uh, daily street. Presence, yeah, there's no, it's not in the front.
Which does mean there's a very unique condition compared to a lot to that in town. Aren't many of them.
Council, any further questions for Brad? Brad, to clarify, if it is or it is not allowed.
It is not allowed in the front of a house of destruction. So that, yeah, it totally doesn't say yard, it says structure and things. So it is not allowed. So they can have it to the side of the house, they can have it to the roof. Based on where they have their house, those.
And the house plan, as listed in the. The lines is currently as.
Was not constructed, it's an permitting, it has, with the house, that footprint of the house has been approved. Um, and we saw the building requirements setbacks, um, and purpose, that they are all those issues. So. The house permit, this is on the building side, we have to do with the house permit, but not the permit for the sport for.
I, uh, Brad, in our code, we have a definition of front. Front yard, front of the house.
Well, you do have a front yard definition, but not a finance.
In this. And the sport board and several other codes reference front of the structure, not front of the yard.
Right, well, they didn't really say front of the structure.
Close as this to the, I mean, this way this is laid out, the jointy neighbors backyards are fairly. Close, I would say. All right, do we get? And then maybe more than what you're getting, Brad, but.
We're gonna pull a plan out.
You'll come up again, just hear what's your name.
Yeah, Kevin Ball, I'm here representing Nick and, uh, I don't know that exact. Measurement, um, off the top of my head, I, I want to say it's at least fifty to seventy five feet. But. You know, wh- what we're trying to, uh. Help everyone understand is, we do have the ability to do sports for. And we think it's gonna impact all the neighbors a lot more if it's in the back of the house as opposed to from the house. Or from the lot, however, now we don't want to consider, but. Or from the lot, however, now we don't want to consider, but. In front of the house, where they used to grave to sink it into the ground. Build a wall around it and didn't have landscaping around it, so we're really able to mitigate, you know, but the noise by having it front, having it in the back. We don't have the ability to go with it, or we're not going to build a wall or a, or they do, so, uh, we can do it back there, but. Some of the neighbors, some of the neighbors that were strongly against it would be more impacted if it's in the back, so even front. And then the neighbors who are in front of the house, if we have to push the house fifty feet forward. That house, that two-story structure has been looking at their backyards. Uh, so I think pushing it from the back hurts everybody, not only the neighbor in the back, but the teammates front. And, and that's really the, the concern that I'm trying to, you know, it was talking a lot of extra money to put it in front, build a wall around it, it's sitting in there hurt. But, uh, we're going to try and be good neighbors. So, take us your question, I don't know exactly how far this.
Okay, fair enough, and what's, with the viewer lines? Say eighty-seven feet.
My name. There's five in one of them. So between.
Yeah, so you can, you go ahead, two, two times we can comment anyways. But I, I believe it's eighty-seven feet wide, the house is sixty-five feet wide, it's the one that happens, so.
Susan, sixty-five Pine Street, so between the sport court will be our driveway, so you have a sport court, you have a grassing area, you have a driveway, you have a little bit more grass. Before we hit the fence of the people that are in front of the house. So there's, I don't know the exact measurement either, but it's not like it's on the top of them, but to move it. If we put it in the back of the house, that will shift the house, because the courts are typically forty by six, the pad is forty by sixty feet. So you're going to shift the house forward sixty feet. It will go on. The sideline where are there, we have current neighbors on that property line, because the dock is going on the other side, so it will be very close. To that side as opposed to the other side of the yard in the front and below. Great, thank you. If that helps.
So any additional questions for applicant, for the applicants?
Uh, I'm just so, all I. All those twenty-one videos to work. When the light can shine, when the, when the light and when the green light and. There has to be, I mean, but is that, do you light still allow you to throw that sporting night? Because it's not a light as much as it is, they're always going to see people down, and they're all very quiet, I think. That's only when you were very nice, you were very nice, is everything in your language, but the value is they're, they're not concerned about the light as much as the art, that the light, right, and I think it's not standard. It allows you to tell it now. But that's my question, did we do some of the lighting request later? Is that lighting, is suspension still playing that?
I don't know, because I don't know what that lighting entails, like we've said, we have no intention of putting lights up at this point. If we find we want it, it would be the same whether we put it in the back of the house or the front of the house.
But I guess my question is, it would allow plenty to matter.
If, assuming this, the light that we would have to install is bright enough, yes, but I, I don't know what, because I haven't looked into it, because we have no intention to do that. So I can't tell you if it's enough light to play or to be out there. If it's, I don't know what the requirements are, because it's not something we were concerned about at this point.
And that was one of the, I just wanted to be agree, that was the neighbors concern, and I told you today, is that, you know, how often? How much noise is, is it going to be that also? So that, that would be a certain.
Right, right, but I, I think that, again, we're using track of, we are putting one in. And so putting it in the front will help with the noise, which is everyone's main concern. Putting it in the back, number one, you're going to have it coming off the lake and you all have a sudden trouble with the water. And it will not be buried and it will not have a wall in it or any kind of landscaping. So we feel that we're being the best for all of our neighbors by asking to put it where we're asking to put it. So if he finds that we need lights and we have to go back through this, it wouldn't matter whether it was in the front or the back. And so we need to not focus so much on the sound. Because the question is the location, and the location that we are proposing certainly will help with the sound effects. More than putting it in the backyard with nothing with it, level with the ground and closer to our side.
So curiously, but what was the ERB's objection?
Um. Yeah, we all wrote the board on it, part of the blood is watching, they go, it's so hard to. And they put it in the back, why put it in the back? And then that was from sitting through it and going, where's the hardship, that's what they looked at, um. I understand. Both sides, you get a look now, what these have been going. Did it really, the front yard, front of the structure, yes. It's on the street, and that's kind of where the code really comes in, we all on the same street side. Um, this is not the case, because it's in everybody's backyard. Grounding homes, it's their backyard, it's going to be difficult on any house, you have it in the backside, it'd be everybody's backyard. Um, so, yeah. The ERB are looking down to, they were using the code by hardship.
Because it's not built in.
Correct, correct, correct.
Where did they decide to the back there?
Well, that was.
I'm sorry, I think so. Not in the front.
I didn't. Gotcha, now they, they determined that where did it was, it's been in the front floor. So even though Pine Street. Is the side, well, it's on that, it's on, it's on a deep access, it's on a deep access. So.
Okay, so if they put it down at the water. Everybody seems to be saying backyard is at the water, but if they put it there, there's some difference in slow and.
Yeah, and it's not, and that's, it's not.
And it's not.
Correct, it's not, it's not, and they're around it without, because there's a lot of pros and cons to both concepts, um. So that's, that's where they ended it.
And as far as the hardship to us, our whole thing is keeping the house as close to the water as possible, because obviously that's the view. And we have quite a bit of foliage between us and the existing neighbors that goes all the way into the water, so by pushing the house. Forward, however, we're going to say this, it, it decreases our view, and we're, it's taking, and the farther you have to go away from the lake, that's the hardship to us. Because we bought the house with the lake in the right view, and because of what is existing there now, we want to be as close to the lake as we possibly can. Will we move the house a hundred percent, because we are putting this in? But that's why we initially looked at doing this, and then after he spoke with several people, they suggested put it down, put the wall. Because the problem's going to be, people will be upset about the sound, so we put that all in there, and then we're still kind of. Fighting, but the initial thing was to keep our house as close to the water as possible to enjoy that view.
So, and I absolutely appreciate that, just to say, clarity, council, can't agree with your own hardship, so, just sort of, that's sort of the other definition, I need everybody to know that, I just want to be clear about that. Um, all right, council, any further questions or concerns? Just one question, in the package, it shows that there was a sort of, uh, criminal law obstruction, or. Um.
Not an instructor, never been an instructor, I would not make a living that way, I promise you, I currently, like, when I play once a week with a bunch of couples on Sundays. Um, I would make them, like, it's not, tennis is actually my sport, so I probably would be better at that, but not helping.
I mean, you know, like, that loud.
It, it, it is definitely louder than text.
Not as loud as basketball, though.
No, definitely not as loud as basketball.
There's a current ordinance to make some equipment store, what you're putting in the middle of the building hall.
I'm in front.
On the block, yes.
Brad? I mean, you're listening here.
Why? Yeah. We only have four minutes, so we're. We already had a similar discussion about one on Paul Street, we need our house built, you've got no place in the back to put it. And the product, it should play in its private, to, to be a lot, so.
But, but thinking somebody lives on the lake, I can tell you, get closer to the lake, whatever noise it's making is going to. You know.
Exactly, like more people.
Approximately. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve it, as is, I still don't think it's front yard, but, uh, let's see where it goes.
All right, motion to approve, as is councilperson Brad's. Secondly. The second from councilperson layers, also any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
So the question, you're going to raise your own vote if we for this?
You're, well.
And the reason why that house.
I, I would, I would love Brad to answer that, definitely, you speak to that.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yeah, no, so that's the provision for you there, and it's allowed, and, and I would say, I believe this is a very unusual lot compared to any other lot here in town. So I mean, I do understand every support there is.
And this is the reason why variance procedure.
Yes, they're correct.
And, and did you figure out how far it was?
Yes, the lot is roughly ninety feet wide, and it is approximately. It's approximately forty feet, um, from plus or minus from last time. It's, uh, it was very much requested that the group will not set, doesn't it?
No, very much requested. Any additional counts? We begin with persons here?
Hi.
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 All right.
Hi.
What are your thoughts? Passes it to, give me your additions, relates to what I'm asking. Next up is, uh, one of our four minutes is over, people, and first reading, actually, it's. That's the first reading, I know what's.
We can discuss.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. We can discuss it, or we can read it and have a public hearing, and per, especially that next council meeting.
Yeah, we, we have Brad here anyway, to give you the framework of the, you know, the thought process behind it, and then answer some questions and see if there's any changes that need to be done prior to the final reading, which should be in, uh, June.
All right, so let me go ahead and do the first read, and then we will, uh, have Brad do a, kind of, overview of how we got here, or. Have the question for on this. This is ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-three, that was the one, downtown, town committee in Florida, amending the existing non-conforming development expansion, addition, amending article ten, vision ten. Week zero one, week zero zero, of the time of community development, go to allow the expansion of an existing non-conforming structure, when such expansion does not increase the non-conforming. Such expansion is in full compliance. But the standard for existing non-conforming structure related to reconstruction after partial full demolition, reconstruction after a town declared state of emergency for an actual disaster. Or other weather conditions, approved by the town manager, reconstruction within the one-hundred-year flood zone, reconstruction of old houses and docks, and other verification updates as provided. Providing for separability, verification.
Thank you, man, uh, yeah, I think it's a quick overview, um, and I, as a pastor, who's aware, this is many that are coming for you. On these, you know, older homes that are not conforming, that are the improvements that are limited by the tentative set of registration, and however, didn't expand. But what we're doing is still complying with, the new part of the business, complying with the setback, if your current four area limitation, your current property status, so. Other than the sort of the ten percent that we, that reconstruction or addition is fully implied with your code. And I'm going, going back through the variances over the last nine years, I haven't been able to find one of those sites where it was a ten percent, where everything has been in compliance. That were done by the town, however, you have done, like, ones where it was ten percent, and they weren't being compliant with the, with requirements, so you're still wanting to be non-conforming with your addition or expanding it, no, it's evident. So one of the things that I think we're looking at is, we'll see variances that are rarely approved, and we can see a pattern, and a lot of the approved. And that's often a sign for us to say, and maybe that part of the code is maybe then, no, there's a reason to change it. And so I did approach, uh, and how manager Smith has said, this, well, I think this may be a time to make that change, because I think. At the end of the day, what happens is, I think, is ten percent, sometimes it's a barrier for people to want to include his existing homes. Because of having to go through that process, which as long as it's complying with everything else, those get approved, so I think that will help with that situation. So the ordinance that, that you have in quarters, you can refer to reading, is changing that section of your code. And the most significant change of this is that removing the ten percent restriction. But saying now that a non-conforming structure may only be improved or added to. If that construction is fully compliant with the current requirements and. So someone may not use the fact that they're already going to say, I'm not going to have a ten percent now, and unless it's not, they can't come to the full permit saying, we're going to do an addition at nine feet because I'm already. This seven eleven, that addition was selling, and then with the ten feet. They still would be going to divide the maximum four area in that, so they need all of the requirements. And, and how it's working within there is not increasing the non-conforming, we're not making whatever's non-conforming, in most cases, it's the setback. Um, that they're not making that worth adding to it, so that everything that comes before it would come and be compliant with the, with the current code. Um, it, it also what it does, it, it, it addresses the issue of starting to get damaged by fire or other disaster, the plan is, the code says. And what we, or what we're recommending and what we put in the ordinance is to allow for someone whose home is damaged, but that has an un-conforming situation, you can set back to the most common law. If that damage is caused by fire or an event that, but is a, um, declared state of emergency, you're opening this. Was a significant event, one of the changes that the ERB had recommended, we presented this as a, as a concept before putting this one together. Was also provided, able to come in here on some other kind of other event, may not realize that level, but is significant enough to say. Was, it should be able, this part should be able to apply to the reconstruction, but it would allow that structure to come back as it existed prior to that event. It wouldn't have to come back. Comply with the current codes, but it would allow to come back as it existed the day prior to the, the destroy or damage. So what that does is allow somebody to get back to where they were, it doesn't allow them to get bigger than they were. To get more than they were, and they're not in time to make it, it's back to where they were prior to that event occurring. That's how that part of the rule, this is about destruction, would allow for that, that would be the only, that would be the only sign that would occur. Any other kind of renovation, demolition, any other kind of change with a non-conforming structure. It can only be done, comply with the current regulations. So we often get questions from builders, saying, well, if I keep a wall up there, if you, you know, this, this here cannot do it, and it's always, you know, you can't. This sounds very clear, no, you can't, and even any kind of change to that structure, if it's non-conforming, that thing has to come performing. Um, the other pieces we added, because it's out of order, but to have it very clear, and here's people aware. One, we put the reference into the funeral requirements for the under your flood, just to be clear to everyone that even if you can come back, say, after a flood, you flood. Um, and your home must be, then with a slight elevation, and you can't go back to that, the funeral regulation, it's not from us, but I'm saying this. So we want to make sure that's clear to your ordinance, and, and importantly, here in town, when you're in various structures, that's a. So we want to make sure that is clear to your ordinance and and importantly, here in this town, when you're in various structures, a lot of situations, very, very good. Um so we have, we're also putting a specific reference to the uh box, to the, to the dots and sit with the county ordinance. Which we've already got, it's part of the code, just reflecting here as well, make it easier for people to find it. And and that's overview of what those change are. Uh we do believe that it will make the process much more streamlined for folks because I'm are, if you're going to do this, it would make me good improvements if it's home in the town in here. And and that's what we're going to encourage, not this way to occur. Uh we did have the town attorney, the attorney said we do it, she makes some pleas to it, letting them for you, includes several changes. And as I said, we could go to the developer board, they're leaving last month, they reviewed it, um they manually recommended the town support it. With that one, so we can have this coming to do a designation of a weather event, which we could. Um so that's my, this is my, you have any comments?
I will clarification for us to make sure I pull on change. So. Similar, we we can straight line events that would qualify for maybe not a big disaster that we're getting, but the it was so significant, whether it matters. Just use that as a as a baseline. So if a tree falls on a nonconforming house. Or maybe two trees fall and needs to be repaired. They're able to repair that nonconforming house as it was prior to without extension.
With the town manager who will and that's something that's true.
Yes.
So here's where I'm a hundred percent sure I understand and I'm going to be careful that we think about this. Say. Five trees fall on this house. This may not happen, right? Somebody has a one church leaning up. So. It's in essence, this is the way where the value is repaired as well with value of the, you know, the house structure as it sits. How's that handled? You know, kind of like, because we run up against this in like the FEMA events in terms of the the major destruction. So are they able to rebuild that or do they have to build new structure?
If if that event that caused those five trees fall and the town manager says, yes, that was caused by a Smith weather event. Then they can come back as they exist. Now, if they, because this is a separate thing from FEMA where if they're in that hundred year flood. By by federal law, we have to meet them, to meet it.
Right.
The way this would be structured, now if if those trees fell because they were not well protected or they were diseased, that's not a weather event, then anything coming back would have to be fully compliant with your current code. People would still have the ability to ask for variance based when they would come back, but now when it beyond ten percent, it would be a say, I don't want to come back and build a situation. So.
Right, you know, about this. Yeah.
So council, I mean, for.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So I asked Brad, I said, so if a council person find ages. Okay. If they had wanted to, they could have rebuilt and not have progress setbacks on some of their sides. But they'd be able to rebuild like, I mean, the reason this code came by the way, some people leave one wall. And then knock down the rest of the house and then they grandfather even, so. Whatever you said, I was here and we said, oh, that's not. Ten percent is arbitrary. You are absolutely right. Every school one that's come up though. If they're not modifying, if the new work is being code. They're not modifying what isn't, we let it go and sees fair.
That's right.
With the understanding that they go and knock down the rest of the house, they gotta. But I'm having an issue if the whole thing has come down. Okay, so my fighter thing, it's not from an event like a weather event. It just burns down.
Right, the way that the code is written, it says fires specifically.
Oh, they could just rebuild and not need all the setbacks and other.
It's how it's proposed.
And I have an issue with that. I think. You know, that's why we have the code, that's why the change of anything new that gets built should be modified to meet the code. Oh, that's.
Yeah, and I think that's part of my thought. You know, I do. You can see some instances where, especially in the fire, where you can lose harm in the bubble. You know, your inability to act like it was, better existing slab.
You know, we do get micro bursts and sometimes it's three houses and they get damaged, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's it's okay. So this is certainly, I think, earlier to set and maybe discussion about time, but um because you don't want to penalize anyone, but you also don't have a necessary to in a nonconforming situation with performance. If it's within.
And and most of these incidents are covered by insurance. It's not like we're making them spend more money or making their situation worse. You know?
Well, I mean, I don't care.
And and what is they, let's say they, by the way, it's reading, they go and rebuild it. And they get the variance automatically on setback, then we decide, oh, we want a second floor and we want oh, you know what I mean?
It's trying to recover that, right?
Right, but you can't expand beyond what is.
And you can only go exactly.
Correct. Whatever exists the day before the event.
To attempt to prevent that from occurring.
Yeah.
That's me. So yeah, it's a.
That's that's.
It's something. You know, I mean, usually they're not, I'm not exactly sure which side of that I want to.
They need to um like oversee it. I mean, nobody knows exactly what somebody's house is except the people that have been there. Oh, yeah, I always have rebounds. I always have, whatever.
Right.
You see, that's.
Yeah, so I'm very interested about how we do full record, certainly recommend to define. It's somewhat of a little simple, but also we do have a proper great information for basic information. You know, footprint of the house, number best path, as we will sort footage, we do have that. With the dollars used.
Yeah, I don't think it's time for me to roll everything in terms of what we build, but if you have total destruction of a facility that's not conforming. To me, it would seem like an opportunity to have a rebuild in a formal fashion. They can do so without. Those aren't, I mean, um that's my two cents.
Don't. I do agree with the ten percent and not modifying.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, didn't prove it.
Right.
I get that. You're saying that some.
There are, but I did, uh, yeah, so I remember those just said on where it is, this, that, send to the policies, it's kind of, there's not a technical reason for one or the other. And I want to send, I think, number one, let's say, for the part of allowing you come back on foreign county design, county makes you come back to conform. So it it's, you can find it either way. What your vote currently says is if the damage is more than fifty percent, then you have to come back from forming. So if that is our council to keep that, because it kind of gets sued with the threat bill within that like FEMA, with the the threat of is that damage is fifty percent of the ratings, what he says, then it needs to come back and it's less than that and major repairs as.
And and like I said, the reason we modify the code was to prevent needing one wall.
Right, right.
Being grandfather.
And that would only apply in a situation of fire or an active disaster. That only applies in that situation. Everything else has to be built in compliance on that.
I also want to remind everyone that, so this is the, you know, the public hearing on this is the next week. Part of the process that we we uh discussed it and speak it and that allows everybody to get their questions answered in some trace and um and you know, the opportunity to pull the comment out of the hearing. Heather, are we? If if we were to incorporate some of the discussion that we had tonight, that we consider a major change?
Depends on if you can change the title. Because the title was going to be advertised by Dorothy ten days prior to your next public hearing. And it depends on how substantive the change would be.
Right.
But if you go back to the language that you currently have with respect to the fire, then I'm not quite sure that's necessarily a substantive change because that's what you currently have in your code.
Right, but if we were to make the change based upon you know, uh complete destruction of the property, which is, is, you've got to have an engine for that too, I was, to have anything that would make sense.
And that's what I'm going to have in that first, it was based on the value.
Yeah.
Repair.
But I mean, I think we're just really trying to prevent people from going through a variance request if they're not touching what's that what's nonconforming and they're adding one way that meets all our codes of. That's what the grid.
That's what it's saying.
Yeah, you know, it's something to do with.
You can, we were talking about. I want to, you know, and that was in a situation that very probably I have, I just sometimes when you do this long enough and start to try it out thinking, maybe I'm just complicating it. Like any additional, we went to do one of the past staff, I mean, they're pretty very good.
I think.
You're absolutely, um. Is it common for the town manager to be to declare the.
Well, in this situation, we're going to declare one, are you serious when you say that that doesn't rise that? Yeah, we didn't prove by town.
Not in my word. Typically, your town manager is serving as your E O C director, so that would be the person that would do that.
Yeah. But again, I would defer as town manager to any declarations or anything that is like the micro burst we had, I believe it was in twenty thirteen.
Yes.
Uh which is pretty much a tornado that just didn't make landfall, um but it ripped into town pretty bad. Um and I think the intent was not to punish somebody for an act of God. Um and to let them rebuild what was there prior to, again, if it's not violating any uh FEMA flood plane um areas. No, we don't have to include that portion of the language. We can keep it as is as far as the fifty percent.
Right.
Um and.
First, the issue that's I've heard horror stories of fire in town, there's, you know.
Yeah.
The Navy's declaration um by the town manager that is contrary to what the formal.
Right.
Um so it's it. I hope that you.
Oh, no, no, no.
But it's just, you know, maybe maybe future, while I think, while I hope you say it forever, I'm not sure that you will outlive the organs, we'll see.
Yeah.
Um so I actually think through that. Um the second thing is, is there a way to get like a a border document? About pages?
Oh, yes.
Leaving the.
Yes.
He chooses. There's other pieces of the emergency declaration, it's it's not only not only related, it's various ordinance that it talks about, you know, the ability to sense of dollars and mediate by N C P issues that are that.
So I understand the reason for the response by a couple of very, well, kind of understanding of the thing through is you know, this first declaration of the response.
Mm-hmm.
But there should also be an approval or something for the declaration opposed to the response.
So I'm looking at that and it would change words, you know, in the language they speak in the council that you put in, I mean, you're declared whether it applies to the ordinance change.
Or or again, or again, you can keep it exactly as it is right now.
Okay.
Work for the.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the intent was, you know, that was turned in, but the intent was just to eliminate the need for anybody that is making a nonconforming structure adding to it with conforming.
Yeah.
You know, um improvements having to give them the variance process. And that was the real intent of it. So if the.
Ninety-nine percent of it.
Yes, if we're getting the weeds on just this one particular item, we can take that out of the ordinance. Um and keep it what you currently have.
Right.
Yeah, maybe so back to what we have, that part that doesn't change any other. In fact, what the other thing is, is what becomes.
I do suggest you make that determination tonight though, because that's going to change the title of the ordinance. Or at least before Dorothy reads it a second time, even community. I'm sorry. If you're going to change that question with respect to the fire, that is the change is already incorporated in the title of the ordinance. So if we make a determination tonight, that would be much easier with respect to alter or we can make to the ordinance.
So. I don't know. Fire, you mentioned the fire.
I, yeah, I personally think that we just changed the ten percent into and and maybe easier for everybody. I don't think we need to go into like, oh, and if it's all the same, then uh you have to rebuild whatever needs, then you get, you get to uh, you know. Even exactly, you have to rebuild exactly the way it was and where it was and then you can not meet our ordinance. Uh I just don't see a reason.
Okay. We can remove that small part, but the rest of it proceeds.
Sounds good.
I don't, um, I guess. Is that everything that that sap means? Sorry, I'm laboring.
Yes, sir.
Great, um next up, the council agrees, I'm going to move up maybe a little bit anyways, so next week and like down for our competitors to swap that in front of Ross and Simeon, but then swap. Council, you can do with that.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As you all know, during Hurricane Ian, our docks at Fifth Street, which is Lake Street Park, and our dock at Fourth Street, which is like Down Park. Um suffered from severe damage. So what we've had to do in order to ensure that we're meeting the FEMA requirements is get someone to come out and assess the docks and provide a cost proposal back on repairing the structures. What I asked that person to do was come back with their best case scenario repair request because I've worked in other cities that had twenty-two lakes and I've never seen docks damaged this badly during France, it was Charlie Francis and Jean or Irma. So I was really concerned that when we repaired the docks, I wanted to ensure they'd be repaired and and be more sustainable in the future. So what he suggested at Fourth Street was to elevate it eighteen inches. Um because he felt that that would be a little bit more sustainable than leaving it at the current level. However, I was unaware of the fact that Parks and Rec Committee back in twenty nineteen had actually lowered it. So I did get ahold of the contractor who came out and met me there this morning and Tom actually came out as well. And he said that he feels strongly that if the community would like it left at its current height. He will be able to rebuild that structure to be sustainable. So the the issue before you all tonight is whether you would like to proceed forward, keeping it at the same height and making repairs to that dock at Fourth Street. I feel better now that I've been able to talk to him. And and he assured me that he has other docks at that same height throughout town that he's built to be sustainable. So um if that's the council's wish, we can absolutely do that. So this evening, we are asking you to approve making these repairs. Once you approve that this evening, we will have to go through all of any environmental agency permitting as well on these docks because we have to make sure every T is crossed, every I is dotted. So that FEMA will reimburse us for this. So this is kind of just the first step of allowing us to move forward so that the contractor can begin ensuring that he's got all of the environmental permits he needs and begin the repairs. Robert and I have received many, many, many calls and emails from residents asking us to repair and open these docks as soon as possible. So we have been um under that request as well. So I'm hoping that this evening we can move forward with that. What will happen is we'll be reimbursed for whatever the invoiced price is. So, for example, Mr. Fleck said that if he doesn't elevate. So, for example, Mr. Flex said that if he doesn't elevate this dock, it'll be cheaper than what his proposal was this evening. What FEMA has on the dock for, what we're asking for is the current proposals, but whatever the invoiced amount comes in at is what we'll end up at.
We don't have a delta in that amount tonight, right?
I do not.
Um, yeah, I'm just, I have an innovation on this. I just wanted everybody to know that the current dock thirty inches above water level right now. My current dock is twenty-four or two. Only twice have it been underwater, and it was not damaged, neither. Um, so, I think at thirty inches, it's equivalent to, but most, everybody has a better.
So so basically, council, you've got to go watching, you can, uh, the only downside, and then we have a quote for the other number, but, um, we could use the same M G P. And I said, do at the very same height? It was eighteen inch?
Yeah, eighteen inches above, yeah, eighteen inches above the current height.
The current dock height or the mitigated dock height? Or even possible thing, I think, if um, E H D can take. We're in, we're in the form of repairs.
Yes. Yeah, that's why we're bringing it to you tonight, so I can get it repaired and open those docks back up.
Council, your session. So then we give our motion, we repair the box. There are second, all right. Motion is you prepare the dock, it's current, that's second, the council person, those, council, any further questions? Well, just we interrogate what, like you said, Peter, you show that itself. That's all the construction, I've been shaving down myself. And you've done a lot, right? I just, but I think it was what was standing used to any other comments? Do you have, I'm going to go to the council person.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
All right, I mean, right, that's the, you know, so the ordinance, uh, group to except, uh, was okay. Next up is Ross County Solutions, moving those, is it for FEMA reimbursement? Are there any attachments or included in that?
Yes, I will. So Ross County Solutions has been helping us with our FEMA reimbursements, and I do want to say that Dean is here this evening, Dean is who I work with on a daily basis relative to our FEMA reimbursements. And then Mr. Carlos Arrendondo is here to answer any questions that council may have about this item later on after I present, but Ross and I have been working weekly with the FEMA folks, responding to their requests for additional information. Um, and also meeting, having a formal meeting with them every other Friday. Additionally, Ross County sent their inspectors out to take a look at all our damaged areas before FEMA's inspectors arrived. And then they also came to the FEMA inspections as well. So Ross County's been doing a fantastic job in helping me to navigate through the waters of the reimbursement request. For example, some of the things that we have been asked, um, was when we repaired the fences, the split rail fencing. Where did the fence contractor dispose of the old fencing material that they took away? So we have to get to a certain level of minutia with them relative to all of our responses, make sure all of that is in the system, so that as it keeps going through the process and keeps getting released to the next reviewer, all of that information is there. So Ross County has been helping with that incredibly. So what they're asking for this night, this evening, is the initial assessment of twenty-five thousand dollars was based on, and it was a conservative estimate based upon the category A, which is the debris removal category. And so now that we've transitioned into the permanent work and we are going forward with some mitigation work at Sixth Street, I don't know if you've seen Sixth Street and the sidewalk there that has completely eroded away, that will be a mitigation project, because if you were just to pour aside, if you were even to attempt to try to pour sidewalk back there, it would just be eroded again, it would not be a sustainable um, repair there at the dock at Lake Street Park at Fifth Street. So in addition, Sixth Street by Lake Down, Conrad Windermere by Lake Down Boat Ramp is also suffering from the same situation. The water is so close to that roadway that it is compromising the base. And so Ross County's helping us with the, moving forward with the mitigation project there. Secondly, they also assist us with what we call four oh six funds from the state. And that is in order to help us put a temporary fix in there until we can do a permanent solution at some of those areas. So Ross County helps with all of that and all of those responses and coordinating with all of those different entities and agencies from the Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA. So this evening, they're asking for an additional twenty-five thousand, they did this the appropriate way, which was to send me an amendment and ask for us to bring that forward to you for consideration. So staff is asking that town council go ahead and approve this this evening, because Ross County has been doing excellent job with this work. So with that, I will open it up to the town council for questions if they have anything of Carlos this evening.
So, question, so, and the fact that there are two requests, would, would we answer that? Your question, a total of fifty thousand or twenty?
So the initial request was twenty-five thousand, and that's the one that you guys approved back in November, I believe. And so now they're asking for an additional twenty-five thousand, which would take it to a total of fifty thousand for this project.
And the amount that they're assuming or supervising or reporting on it is two millions, one twenty-five?
Yes, that's the list that you have, yes.
And so there's, so the, so the funds that are realigned to the paper and so, and that's even hopefully five percent of the
For example, so FEMA allows for reimbursement, only five percent, all the tools. It's basically only one million dollars, so half of what I know will be a viable amount of reimbursement we need from where, or on, how many, how many hours? Um, basically going to depend whether the final things we could go up, we could go down, possibly depending what the C S C at the end of the year allows for obligation.
What's about your mindset?
Can we buy?
And then, are you going to briefly, you know, on the Sixth Avenue Park and the Lake Street Park, is there sort of plan this utilized mitigation dollars within that, if we then further damage, because there are a lot of these projects, so they're going to be those complex and those, so you can answer this to the, while I see that, so council, I understand.
Yes, so, so, um, FEMA has sort of federal funds in use to rebuild any time. There is also a part of holding assistance for a man allowed to mitigation aspects, that we can deal with, we're sitting, uh, in a certain way for future similarities. Uh, there's also the four oh six communication and four four communications that one way or another to the state, so those are two separate parts. I think right now we're moving with, uh, public assistance, which allows for the eight hundred pairs, and then up to one hundred percent of that amount for the eight hundred pairs to improve the building or for the, uh, structure. So in this case, the mitigation plan is utilizing, uh, the rip wrap and there's possibly, but there's definitely people that ask, it's like a common into play. The first thing that we're going to do is determine all the damages into detail. But we can get the damage to prove and validate our FEMA. Once we have that choice, we can promote to the actual mitigation plan and design. So that they can, uh, see the actual cost of their care versus mitigation. Um, there's some three of two measures that are, uh, in their policy guidance book. Uh, we did great, I just wondered, and that is definitely allowable up to one hundred percent. There is also measures that we can present that don't have to be approved for which they can allow up to fifteen percent without any cost analysis in place. But we can also say, if we need to go higher than fifteen percent, uh, by utilizing the measure of mitigation that's not already through a group, we will, uh, assist with that cost analysis.
Sounds like an additional question, the reason. So like, let's just say the million dollars, five ones that they should done in part.
Mm-hmm.
Am I right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So is, does that project going to prove, has it been, I mean, how, I don't understand what that.
Sure, so, so what we did was we had Glora Engineering take a look at that area, because John and I were concerned that if we just went back with like kind with what was there, that that would not fix the situation. So those costs came from Mike Glora, from his assessment of what he thinks needs to go there, more of like a sea wall, and then you'd have a sidewalk. So what we had to do with FEMA is we had to provide them with what it would cost just to repour sidewalks there or repair roadway there, so that's the first step that we did with FEMA, we have to give them that cost. But our goal is to do a mitigation project there, because we know just putting a sidewalk back there or repairing the road is not going to fix the situation. Um, the roadway's undermined because of the water that came through there, so it, it's compromised. And so you have to do a better situation there than just a standard. So that's kind of where we're at, and that's what Ross County helps us with, they help us with, here's the interim of what FEMA wants us to do, and so we got those costs. We have a contractor that does the paving, we have a contractor that does the sidewalks, we gave them what it would cost just to pour it back in kind. But then what we told them was, that's not sustainable for us, we have to do a much more in-depth repair, which takes us into mitigation, and so that's kind of where we're at with that, does that explain that to you?
Okay, and so we're not going to do any repairs, and we know which way we can involve.
So what we're, what we're working with, and what we met with FEMA on Friday about, was their environmental person was helping us with what we call the four oh six, which is to interim rip wrap there. So what they've requested that we do is get some quotes on rip wrap and an interim fix for that area, so that they can cover that project for us until we can get the final project implemented.
Do you, do you, do you repairers that are covered to eliminate or mitigate any further damage?
Yes.
Then you have your population process, you have your C R T, now. With the
So ultimately, if we did like, we're going to be coming back and learning for another twenty-five thousand, some of these other projects, maybe.
So the twenty-five thousand, we're saying is, because, uh, as we mentioned earlier, the initial twenty-five thousand was, like I was saying, that will be the difference. This additional twenty-five thousand is important, because now there's more projects that are going to remain more, uh, more needs, more, better safe, that we have to go through with people. There is a possibility that it can be ever worse or something higher than that. Our job is to be able to accomplish that, and they will be allowed by the C R T. That is reimbursable.
So if FEMA occurs, two million, one twenty-five, they'll be closer to a hundred thousand.
And also, I mean, it's, it's, when the town might sue us if we get all amounts of damage. It's not as vision as that's the, that's the challenge, it's the balance, everybody seems to, yes.
Okay, so, if the weathermen are right, if, if, if the scientists are right, you're going to have more swings. Well, um, is, is there a common point when the town is asking, get the secretary chief on staff, because we're going to be in constant upgrading? I mean, yeah, whether, whether it's
You, you could, you absolutely could, I will tell you that most cities actually hire someone like Ross County to do it, because the the intensity level of what you have to go through to provide to FEMA to get that reimbursement is, is heavy. Um, so most cities actually do get a consultant to help with it. I know that, um, we have a, I have a genius sitting next to me that I think did it the last time, and did it himself, so.
You don't want to do that.
I mean, we really pretty much is getting picks for Irma with the new portal system, um, and the first ones met, I believe in central Florida. So the twenty-five thousand just isn't, you know, you're paying for Ross County, they're still taking, um, big weight off of staff's shoulders, because we have a small set. Um, all the projects coming through the, um, like right now, it's going to be a lot more on time, if we didn't have Ross County right now working on some of these things. And again, initially, the twenty-five thousand was just for, um, getting back the money for the damages as far as the, the limit of grace, so that, you know, it's category A. But now the balance, so we're seeing some of the projects that are going to get funded through, you know, through Irma reimbursement, that's where the mission twenty-five is, so. Uh, I believe it's one of those, and they know more of the events on the FEMA stand than we've been, than Tommy and I. Um, we learn each storm, there's some new nuances you have to follow, um, especially when it comes to the team contracts and engineering services, but, um, I do believe that this is going to be one of those, and as far as trying to figure out future projects, eliminating any dangers with future storms, that's what the Asian New B Brains coming in. Um, what we have invested well, and what I can add, and, uh, we have some innocent projects over to um, local mitigation, which can have a mess, um, that we have up at the end top.
And? Yes.
So if a storm does come through again, um, we're going to get that A C C D, to the G P, and we, uh, help us with those improvements.
If the FEMA reimbursement is, if it's, the town, the town is going to
If the reimbursement doesn't come through correctly, so FEMA that's not regulated the town. That if you solve it in the hurricane, I mean, the other natural disaster. It's, it's not the towns and cities and the common decision to, probably even forward and have it all be covered in that. All the decisions, it's, it, it, that would affect citizens to local government, whatever. What we bring to the table, as they very well mentioned, is the, the FEMA whole existence program is an integral part of the program. It's always, we're taking, we're relation to the dollars, so we kind of work through. That is the difference that when we provide that salary expertise. Uh, there is a possibility that the, uh, the clear eligibility on some of the fronts. That is all department expertise, we will not recommend you following through with a broad and for any manner of a check or I have any question.
The only thing that's done so far is the debris. Four hundred and forty-seven thousand. Have you done with that?
The debris.
Yeah, the debris is complete.
The debris, the debris itself. But it's still going to be the same validation process.
It would, it would, it would, it's hard, but Yeah, so the debris is, the debris is, it's about the item working right now, so it's just waiting to get obligated. As soon as that gets obligated, then you can submit our first management cost, right, which would be our cost. And then we could get it on one issue, so it's been following, maybe under a million, so you can do that. So we're beginning a couple of weeks to a month that four hundred and forty-seven thousand will be obligated. And then it will submit your first, um, campaign, manage the product, we'll get another twenty thousand or so, uh, that we're on the floor, and we can submit a bidding of those, and we get more obligation. So all of the completed work in the town has already been, it's the clean out, it's on, used to get obligated, and so this, I love the point of one of them. They were talking about limitation, that is, not completed, we're still working through that, so they're ready for, so, handle all the limitations.
So, basically, you can, you will get reimbursement of our fees as money gets obligated. That, that, that also kind of makes us a little bit accountable when it comes down to where our efforts are going. If there is charts that should be some obligation, and the moment that the money gets obligated, we can be plus up to five percent of that project that was obligated. So, so that you don't have to wait until the end, uh, to close out to receive these files.
So basically, the reason we have a consultant, so hopefully with the mitigation fees and, and, and funds, you can get something that you wouldn't get if you were doing it yourself, and additionally, like it's difficult. You have to, have to, that's, that's really advantage, and I was, it's, well, this, this action was a better way. It didn't, later on, so, we shall see, I mean, it's always changing. Small project, virtual, it's all changing, all of that, so it does get complex, and it's probably best not to, except.
I'll make a bunch of, for twenty-five thousand.
Second. All right, the motion, second, any further questions, questions, there have been served from council, we'll begin voting. Counselor, please. Bye.
Bye.
Hi.
Thank you guys. I always want to get all the. If you want to read the comments, um, we've had a post comments. Mention anything, it's very good. Yes, the one. I'm confident the comments for.
I'm deciding if you want me to do your change rates advisory.
I didn't decide that.
Okay, you want me to go on a campus? Oh, yeah, good.
That's what else is part of it.
Did have a historic presentation for the last week. They have a long series of them are um, figuring out some of her. One of the things that did come up um, uh, it's about several times in the discussion. But like in that, what are we doing with town hall? Um, but I'm explaining as as I'm in my thoughts, we do have our technical service speech or the session. My professional bias for pollution in town hall. Um, they're analyzing those plans as you see um, including the assessment. So I do put that not to the public because it sounded like. There's a lot of discussion of why aren't we being involved and in the sort of recognition or well, we all so. Could be um, a lot of focus on what is the strategy and that's where. More um, trying to get focused there um, with continuing.
Thank you for that. I don't want to tense it up. We're unhappy about it. It's easy shots. Much appreciated. And it is uh, easy fix because everything has to be got arranged. And.
Um, last one. Or. Um, spread on lakes, places optional for. Basically, we already defined the meeting and the dozen in line, we don't need to. Um, for that, um. The uh, pretty item was um, tennis with many shoes for um, non-resident and pros being on the course. And um. So tennis is a running for the sun piece of the horse. And um. You know, renewing um, residents' medical fees, that's to leave the force. We have um, the non-residents on the court for the maybes. And it would be way greater, but it was a case in reason, then. We had some sugar to the prostate. So it worked to the right point. So that's kind of our first step. Um, there's a lot of things that we're talking through that. Honestly, I'm anyone that. Go to, right? And. One other thing, I I believe that they are in install, but we had um, some scenes and street artists um, were.
Yes, yes.
So um. And and the possible suckable factor by another news for us and we see it in copper and. So it's been. Then it will be.
We'll be sure that later in the year.
Um, who live today that it's past week. Uh, the date will be twelve months of first Friday of December. Um, they're well on their wires and we've got everything um, positive down, the case and. All the uh, extra stuff that we normally have to order. And the rides and light and stuff, it's already been taken care of. So we're down to ordinate with um. The garden club on the thing. I think it's gonna be a traditional Christmas. So they always try to coordinate with what the trees gonna be. Um, all the decorations, but they're well on their way.
They're being helped.
A bubble machine. Maybe it's not like we're cutting some other items. There's mine similar with that. So is they didn't see that value in.
Really?
The bubble machine, that that one is maybe, I know it's totally things like um. You're gonna laugh, that spin art was as much as a face painter, actually more than having a face painter. There you go. Okay, why? You know, six, seven hundred dollars for spin art. Um, so now they've been really cautious about trying to mix a lot of the negatives and dynamics to focus on stuff that we really want and people are using. So. Uh, but they're already uh, moving forward and have their deposits and people locked down. So we won't have everything going next year.
Yeah, thanks, sir. No, it's kind of part of everything they turned it into, you know, the little bowl hat, but the day is closing well before dark, the time is working back. It's just, so here to make move by y'all kind of forget that. Uh, because we know it will inspire. Definitely we go officially. Right now, it's 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 closing pretty early. And it's opening very late. So we're just trying to figure it out.
I did. I did figure it out. It it's changed to eight forty-five P M. So it should be working now.
But most people are very happy with the residential life. Oh, my going there now and have to fight something.
Seven A R.
You go to that on Excel and uh. All of this here, saving the dock, like everybody have to do during after, open later. Listen to this. And then everybody runs down and then. That would feel good. You two books. Will it be in Robert?
Thank you very, and um, very happy to report and hopefully the um. Governor sign, I guess fifteen days in which when once you've seen the budget to sign the budget, or if you utilize this line of details. Um, but currently in the budget, we have several projects, about three point one million for the Central Water Project. Um, that includes everything in order to start moving to the canal to um, put in appropriate size and to extend lines that are currently earning. Um, meaning that three point one million, which that project, three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the waste project. Uh, one million dollars can more than a little cap phase one, now being addition to the seven hundred and sixty thousand that we currently have uh, obligated uh, to District Five next year. Um, one point five million for the winner of Maine Street uh, intersection improvements and then seven hundred and two thousand dollars for the chain and the intersection improvements. So you're leaving about six point seven million dollars for the appropriations uh, from Senator Baxter Lee and from Senator person that I can see. Uh, so hopefully those will not get vetoed. Um, I don't see. Why it was a project. And that's been one of the um, items that I think I've been pushing for. Um, so hopefully it's signed and it's signed, I will go ahead and release to the um, council, letting you know what projects were and which projects. Made the veto, but right now everything's looking pretty good.
Yours gross.
Um, you said the lottery is just six three to the now.
Six thousand, six thousand, yeah, that's a simple uh, base. So there's three phases. There's south, central and north. Um. They were going to just do a million dollars each to each phase that wouldn't.
Right.
Pay for it. Um, so we're, we've gotten to agree to just fully funding one phase as opposed to partially funding three phases.
And once you have that going along, it's a little, hopefully a little easier to. It's uh, two, so.
Not most people in that area are already in that one.
This would pay for not only getting. They do have, but some of the lines of the sauce. So you need to make sure that the size of the lines will be available for far-flung conception as well. And that's why I, you know, that's second avenue. You know, we were looking at using Harper funds for the other one and that extension. Now with this money. We can eliminate that using Harper funds and use that force to help supplement the other two areas which are bubble investment. Yeah, um, probably need most not included in agenda. After we have several people that are absent that day. Um, mostly everything is status quo, just waiting on um, either contracts or um. Approvals from uh, farmers and management that comes to our H and T P grants. Um, and then also things that just were, they're splitting on the deliver. Um, so I think you get a lot more information in June, Public Repair Project Meeting, um, than this previous one, because it's pretty much just on hold until they got um. You know. More information from the various officials that we're working with. Budget announcement, of course, is gonna be on May twenty-third. Uh, right now, everything's been pretty good. As far as the revenue coming, um, overall was estimated. Uh, and it's that, you know, I believe the expenditures, you know, no doubt about half of the partners that everybody's been on that portion as well. So. Um, nothing great to be right lies about. So we're gonna be looking pretty good on the end of this year. Um, we do have a meeting set for our um. Hurry, ready, which we have to do in May since June is the beginning of herpes and. Um, but again, as you know, you see from Tony and myself, she and the rest of staff, you know. We do a very good job on the response and being to make sure that we're getting it documented and everything taken care of and cooked and man. Um, budgets, we start working on those with the directors and on good knowledge, of course, in a lot of those meetings. Um. My Q and A is going to be tomorrow night at seven P M. And last thing I want to bring up is that we were approached by Shonda Locke. Uh, one of the residents was asking about some information relative to the possibility of any scenes in town. Uh, we spoke to that resident and. We wouldn't pretty much give any further discussions unless their H O A board was. Um, in agreeance with the possibility of any scenes in town one year as well. So chief and I met with their H O A board, um, and they are interested in the possibility of any scenes in town. Now bring this up because, you know. We're gonna be setting up a public information um. Um. Session with residents that live in Shonda Lock. Um, but if there is. I don't want to proceed any further. If there's a huge, you know, um, objection, you know, from town council. Uh, I'm not moving forward with that. Um, but again, it's currently an exploratory phase. And there have to be a reference from the Shonda Lock residents themselves. Uh, but currently, there's a bit of momentum in wanting to annexes in town.
And he said that, you know, they they look at the cost, the town, units. Even nothing or minimal, so it's and um. So how many months are there?
Uh, seventy-three. Yes, and again, you have to think of the resident electors, the H O A, getting them on board was uh, pretty good. Um, you're looking at about four hundred thousand dollars uh, additional labor and about seventy-five thousand for the stormwater. Um, it is a gay community that take care of their own roadway state common areas. Um, so the cost of the analysis is very much just a, it's a loss for us. I mean. We'll be getting about four hundred thousand dollars in additional um, taxes with the town, if not more. Um, and the. There's no drain in town, so of course, you know, um, police officers, we would have that now, so anything like that.
Can I sit on our rear for a while and it's kind of one of the ones that makes the most sense. It's really nice.
Uh, keep that in mind.
If if anything, we're moving positive and with.
Yeah, I just want to put, counsel, there's a, hey, we're having discussions and, you know, and then maybe one side, you know, in case. People start texting again, and the guys say, it's the one that's on the lock thing. Um, they approached us, we sort of had some exploratory meetings. And then we had one a big meeting with uh, hopefully our residents answering their questions, but um, I believe it's a win situation for both the town and residents of Shonda Lock. And also the floating planet is what we're chanting. Yeah. But that's all happening.
Thank you, Robert. Anya, thank you for all the things you've been doing and running around getting less than qualifications, so.
It's absolutely no problem whatsoever. Uh, my team's been busy doing a lot of vegetation removal. We were able to clean that pathway at Bessie that runs along. Lake Bessie. So my team actually did some vegetation removal out there. We've done some vegetation removal along Oakdale for lines of site issues. So they've been busy. Making sure that's taken care of. We also got some um, complaints about Oakdale at between eleventh, tenth and eleventh. So we went out there and used some of the new roadway material and re. Restructured that roadway and that seems to have done the the job well. Haven't had any more complaints about that. Secondly, one of the things I've been doing is getting the the rip wrap quotes that FEMA needs in order for that interim project. So I've been working on that. Street sweeping happened la- about a week and a half ago. And in addition, um, we have the Rising Land Management out cleaning out the drains. If you see them with the back truck, that's what they're doing. They're cleaning our our drain systems, which is important. So happy that they're doing it.
Yeah, I think you're something to be personally.
Sure, yeah, I'll have Diane for something else.
This is something that people actually know that.
Sure. Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, let's uh.
That's all I've got this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, sorry, most.
So the session has. Legislative session has ended. Yeah, you're on, you're good. Legislative session, there were a total of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven wills crying to the end. Um, all the seven hundred and eighty-one women asked us and said. And then it would be presented to the operator for our team, which someone said, Ron said. The bathroom is the one that made him throw up the last time he was born. Six. And that one has been presented to the government. Uh, so here, hopefully we will not sign it. The United States, the things that are not capable to facilitate. The hopefully one, um, some of the other things that I talked about last time, we met the person that mentioned that Congress would be there on a useful, I don't think. That dialing in, um, the local ordinance. Which allows um, the very few public marriages for someone suing about ordinance, which is hard to agree. That was presented to the governor's legislature. That also requires for local governments to, we got like awesome finances, which. Was gonna be paid and then I think they're gonna have to do that. And the sovereign media bill that and obviously checking guy. And then the tree burning. Uh, I don't know if you heard on last time that there was a bill out there to allow the cities to again regulate tree burning. But um, they're not again, unfortunately.
You know what the. The penalty is if you don't fire. Number six, it would be.
It was, the penalty is by day. I don't, they increased it. The penalty by day, I think the maximum now is city turn or pointing out the name. It's a new, but again, this one hasn't been signed yet, but it definitely has increased. I can send you the legislation.
And do you think that the governor understands that there are people that don't make any money in this?
I I talked to Robert Stewart, who is one of the lobbyists here, and he said that this has been an issue to have all elected officials. Five of us, one six has been an issue for a long time of like twenty-one legislation. Legislator wanted to get in front of the governor. So. I think in a team and a lot of our local cities, no, none of them make money, none of the mayors now have such many jobs and. Definitely, like I said, not something to encourage them to sit on their office.
I have a question. So if he does sign it, anything we can do or is that it?
Yeah, we we can work on changing it. So, you know, the part about is I think. elected official, but sir, without compensation, it would be definitely good. We, we. And hopefully, hopefully you'll be able to. It seems to be a little bit of a.
Okay, is it there a plan or do you get?
So chief is out this week in Colorado, so I'm filling in.
Uh, May third, our honor guard attended here with Tony Memorial to represent Robbie Jordan and his family. We'll, the attending, uh, certainly the attending of the National Forest Memorial starts this weekend. And then the Assembly can leave, launch the memorial, or we're gonna be there next week. And we hired a new prostitute, I put it out last week, her name is Earth Lopee, but we have had an answer to that, I would say, what are her? Great, so, that's all right.
Thank you.
I just thought I would, they, um, have words, so I should have went to a meeting. And the coroner, of course, for each one of four will be the presidential partner, we will be back with them, so the. If our qualifying series is certainly different, we will have to give a resolution or change. What our charter and we say to make what we need to have. So that will be coming up and I was contacted by the local army track that which would be associated, the records managers and then very, um. After the. The set on their board, so, um, I have talked to a bird about that and I informed it's not that. So I'm just now going for a little check.
Alright, and so you, or they just, instead of doing the. Stuff instead of us, so.
What's our standard?
It's, it stands for Association of Records Managers and Administrators. Impressive.
Got that. We, um, we appreciate everything that you. Definitely wish you a very. They, and the best they can do is let you go. I'm supposed to be, uh, or something else, meeting at. Seven fifteen two.